Resolution authorizing the adoption of procedures for electronic public meetings and public hearings to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID-19 pandemic disaster.
Mr. Chairman, so what I'll do, I'll go through just a brief presentation, just kind of describing where we are and then items A and B kind of fall in tune with one another, and then we'll go into item C. So let me, uh.
You want me to read B then also?
Um, you know, I.
This should be.
So again, we're dealing with the resolution and emergency ordinance for electronic meetings. So if you remember at the board's last meeting on March, at the Board's Recreme in March 18, the Board amended the bylaws for meetings conducted through telephonic, video, electronic, and other electronic communication. So under the Governor's Emergency Declaration, without a physical quorum, the Board gather and discuss topics that are of not ordinary, of emergency matters. We cannot discuss things that are ordinary county business. So last meeting, the Board approved amendment to the bylaws to allow the Board to participate via electronic means. And as we move forward with this, you know, as I said before, the one thing is it only allows for that participation to happen twice per year. Since last previous meeting, there was three board members that were not present. That would be your one, one out of two per year. So that's what the Board adopted last time. Like I said, that's to discuss emergency-related topics. Now, what we're moving into, we're moving into a resolution and emergency ordinance for electronic meetings, and it gets a little confusing. But really, so one, we have to get the Board to adopt a resolution first to maintain Savannah County government operations during the COVID-19 pandemic disaster. This resolution adopts procedures for electronic public meetings and public hearings and is proposed to ensure the continuity of government. Second, is the emergency ordinance. So the emergency ordinance really, which Mr. Payne described before, under Virginia Code 15 dot two dash fourteen thirteen, makes virtual and telephone meetings during a disaster allowed for continuity of government, and also directs related, directly related to the emergency. So by the Board kind of going through and adopting the resolution and the emergency ordinance, today, for the first three items, we have a quorum here. So we're going to go ahead and, and, and we'll basically be using the regular meeting procedures for that. But for the rest of the meeting, once the emergency ordinance is adopted, as Payne said before, then Mrs. Booker and Mrs. Eager can participate at that point because everything on the agenda deals with continuity of government. Couple things to note, under Virginia Code fourteen thirteen, this can be done, notwithstanding any contrary provision of laws such as FOIA. Meetings should be as public as possible under the circumstances such as streaming conference call. We've gone through measures. This meeting, we have it, uh, we have the board members that are not here, they're able to participate and see what's on the screen. In addition, we've got the public through Facebook Live participating, and they can see what's on the screen, and they can hear what's going on during the meeting as well. So we are participating and trying to make the meeting as public as possible. Under this emergency ordinance, it will remain in full force and effect for a period of sixty days unless the Board decides otherwise or rescinds, rescinds the emergency ordinance. But in no event shall the ordinance be in effect for more than six months. So, and maybe, Mr. Payne, you can describe, just kind of talk about this. Say we have a future meeting, if we have a quorum, again, we don't need to operate under the emergency ordinance, correct?
Correct.
So really, that's, that's really Agenda Items A and B. And Mr. Payne, I'll let you, you know, kind of chime in on anything for those.
I think you've addressed it perfectly.
Okay.
Do we have a motion for matter A?
I move the Savannah County Board of Supervisors to adopt the resolution titled "Resolution Authorizing the Adoption of Procedures for Electronic Public Meetings and Public Hearings to Ensure the Continuity of Government During the COVID-19 Pandemic Disaster."
Okay. Got a motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Weaver, all in favor? Opposed? Chair votes A. Motion passes three zero. B, emergency ordinance to effectuate temporary changes in certain deadlines and to modify public meeting and public hearing practices and procedures to address continuity of operations associated with pandemic disaster. Mr. Dahl has already gone over that with us. Do I have a motion?
I move the Savannah County Board of Supervisors to adopt the ordinance entitled "Emergency Ordinance to Effectuate Temporary Changes in Certain Deadlines and to Modify Public Meeting and Public Hearing Practices and Procedures to Address Continuity of Operations Associated with the Pandemic Disaster."
Motion submitted by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Weaver, all in favor? Opposed? Chair votes A. Motion passes three zero. Now we have the resolution authorizing the adoption of the temporary emergency amendment to employee leave policy. Ms. Rice.
Start off a little, a little bit, and I'll let Ms. Rice chime in as well. So again, you know, due to this pandemic disaster that we're dealing with, there's been certain things that have been approved from the federal level regarding sick leave for employees due to this. One thing that we are wanting to do too, because actually, the federal policy goes into effect today, April 1st. But due to the fact that this started prior to April 1st, we are making, we are asking for a temporary change as well to make you go back a little further retroactively to March 15th as well, which would then cover employees between the period of March 15th to March 31st. And then the federal piece goes into effect on April 1. Let me go ahead and pull up.
That's really item three you're talking about.
It is. It's, 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 it's item C. Yes, item C, correct. Let me pull up, look like Mr. Weaver. Um, yeah. So Ms. Rice, you want to talk a little bit about this, or you want me to go into it?
Either way.
Okay. So basically, the county's personal personnel policy clearly outlines procedures for sick leave in accordance with the EOC, ADA, FLSA, and other wage and hour laws. In response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the President signed the families' page of emergency sick leave for employees who become ill, who have been exposed to someone. The dates of that, and under item three, on this action, it says March 15th through April 1st. But there's, there was actually a change yesterday. Christina Hoffman from Mr. Payne's office let me know that there was a slight modification. Instead of making it effective on April 2nd, they made it effective on April 1st, just to be consistent with starting at the beginning of the month. So I've gone ahead and made a few changes. And let me go ahead and close this document out, so you can see those changes. So if you go here, let me see if I can turn on. So if you go here, so in the package, you know, it describes, um, on March, March 11th, the World Health Organization declared COVID an outbreak pandemic, showed what, what the President and Senate did, why we're implementing this sick leave policy, how it pertains to the county's personnel policy. And you can see up here on the screen that we did make some slight modifications, what was in the package. It previously said April 1st, and we changed that to March 31st. So we are asking the Board to adopt this to allow amendment to the county's sick leave policy, to allow those employees between March, March 15th to March 31st to still be eligible, eligible for sick leave if they had to go out for some reason, or if they had some, some exposure. But then in addition to that, starting on April 1st, there's a federal policy in place that allows employees to get up to eighty hours paid sick leave. Do you want to add on to that, Ms. Rice?
No. So what this is, is just an extension of what President Trump had signed previously and pulled it back for about two weeks. And just as a kind of a county status update, we currently do not have any staff members that have tested positive, nor any immediate family names. So there, there may have been some that were home out of caution, but everybody's in good shape right now. And this is just to provide that provision for what took place prior to April 1st.
And again, we're making this retroactive to March 15th. So any of those employees that maybe had, you know, some, some symptoms that were sent home because of that, again, no one's been positive, but this would just allow them to be paid sick leave as well. And, and, and then the next piece is, starting April 1st, any employee that, that does show symptoms to be paid as well sick leave. And this is in addition to their ordinary sick leave as well.
That's through June the 30th.
It's through June the 30th, correct. And, and, and now, and is that the federal piece through June the 30th?
Yes.
So again, so we have made changes on the resolution, and the resolution that you have before you contains the corrected changes. And again, on the actual emergency temporary amendment to the personnel policy, down here, you can see down here as well, we've made some, some brief changes, what was previously in the package, to also reflect those changes and dates as well. So unless the Board has any further questions regarding this action matter, I would entertain them.
I will make a motion. I move to approve the resolution titled "A Resolution for a Temporary Emergency Amendment to Employee Leave Policy Effective March 15th, 2020, to June the 30th, 2020, as presented." Motion's made by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. O'Brien, all in favor? Opposed? And Chair votes A. Motion passes three zero, two X. All righty. County Administrators report. Mr. Dahl?
And, and, and just, and just, just for the record, you know, so now we have approved those, those new resolutions. Now, going forward, Mrs. Eager and Mrs. Booker will be able to participate in, in the votes, full participation moving forward in the remainder of the action matters. So I just have a real couple of quick report on, Mr. Chair members of the Board. So one, just some announcement, today is Census Day, April 1st is Census Day. It's also April Fool's Day, but we'll just go with Census Day, and we'll keep it at that. So Census Day, you know, helps determine hundreds of billions of dollars in federal funding and how they flow into communities every year. You know, it affects transportation, it affects school funding, it affects a lot of other funding streams through here and for the public to see. You know, there's obviously lots of different means that the public can get the word out as well, through Facebook, through Instagram, through Twitter, and hashtag 2020 Census. And this data was polled from the U.S. Census webpage yesterday. So it shows Virginia as a whole. So Virginia as a whole, up to March 31st, the response rate was forty point three percent. And if you look at this map, there's different colors reflecting what percentage of those localities have had reporting up to this point. And you can see Savannah County right here, right next to Almirall, we're in the, we're in the yellow, which means we've been up with all the others that are in yellow, up into the forty to fifty percent participation range in the census so far. It would be nice to see Savannah get above everyone else in every other county and get ahead of the game and, and, and get, get the census done. And I think, you know, while, while individuals are at home and, and have to stay at home more, it would be good to get out there and then make sure that everyone gets, gets signed up for the census through the online, online method. And if you see right here, this just kind of shows Savannah County, which again, showing here, we're at forty three point four percent through March, through March 31st participation rate. So just, just encourage the public and encourage everyone else to make sure you get the word out about Census Day and, and getting, getting registered for the U.S. Census. And just one other thing. So the Zion Crossroads Elevated Storage Tank painting has begun finally. And I'm not sure, Kelly, this hair stripe buying every day is a gun?
Yes, it is all blue.
So it's all blue now. So this was, this was a few days ago when they're painting it. So the tank is, is all blue. And they'll be reaching out, the firm contractor that's working on the tank will be reaching out to county to work on the logo at some point to make sure the positioning of it's correct. Obviously, we're gonna, we're gonna put, there we go. We're gonna position, obviously, the logo on the tank, so it's kind of faces towards Zion's Crossroads, kind of, you know, looking at the Louisiana power tank. There's this kind of position towards us. We're gonna kind of angle ours position towards them, so it's kind of pointing towards fifteen and two fifty.
You know, the problem with the tank now, what's up? We don't have anything to put in it.
Once, once, once.
Rectify that situation in November.
Okay.
By November, that situation.
By November. But we're gonna have a great looking tank, Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
And so just moving forward, like I said, just some, some of the next upcoming Board of Supervisors meetings, obviously, with what's going on, we're gonna have to determine, you know, how we move forward. But right now, we have scheduled the public hearing for the FY21 budget and this calendar year 20 tax rate for next Wednesday, April 8th, at 7:00 PM in the Morris Room. And we are, we're supposed to adopt the budget, have a regular meeting and adopt the budget on April 15th at 7:00 PM. If something happens and, and the Board doesn't adopt the budget on April 15th, we nominally put April 22nd in there, and then we just have some regular meetings in May and Mar, a couple of meetings in, in May. Obviously, with what's going on, we're gonna have to monitor it that week by week to see how, how the meetings move forward. Obviously, today, the Board adopted some new policies for, for holding business and operating with continuity of government. So even I would imagine, if we move forward and, and, and we are not able to have a meeting where quorums, you know, a physical quorum is, is possible here, we could still hold county government operations and continuity of business moving forward. So, but we'll have to determine how that, how that is. I can tell you, when, when we're talking about the budget, obviously, there's a lot of things up in the air right now as far as revenues, tax rates, you know. There's, some of our neighbors have decided to push back, adopting their budgets. Once we get into the budget piece of this, we'll, we'll, we'll get into the weeds a lot more as far as revenues, projections, what everyone else is doing. But those are just some things that we're gonna have to just really kind of play week by week at this point. But as it stands, with what the Board approves, we can still move forward with, with, with continuity of operations and hold electronic meetings. So if the Board has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I'll hand it back to the Chair.
Thank you, sir. Do appreciate it.
Miss. I have, hello?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. All right. I have a question about the census. Was there a letter that's supposed to have gone out to the homes? Anything from the Census Bureau?
Yeah, Mrs. Booker, I think there was two letters and from, and what I was reading, two letters and a postcard that should have gone to residences at this point already.
Okay. I don't remember receiving anything, but I'm sure I probably.
Well, and like I said, the good thing is, the public can do it online, too. That's, that's the beauty of it. I did mine online. I was sitting there eating dinner one night. So it's, it doesn't, doesn't take long.
You have the same problem. All right. I have several cards, but I haven't received the form yet.
Right.
I won't receive the form.
It'll give you a number that you punch into the thing when you go online. It'll say, here's your number. You go to the website that it says to go to, punch in that number to your residence.
No, no, no. What may happen.
People don't go online.
Ms. Harrison, do you know?
Well, Ms. Harris is gonna help us out.
So in the letter and on the postcards, there is a number on there that you can call, and they will mail a form to you.
I called them.
You did call them and let them know?
Yes, but I couldn't get through.
So they're probably working from home, too.
Right.
But the, if you haven't responded by, I think.
April 15th, they said. They were gonna send out the forms, but they haven't heard it from.
And they would send somebody door to door.
Yeah.
Until after the end of May.
Yeah.
After the forms go.
There's, now, with, with, obviously, the COVID-19, obviously, with what's happening on, what's happening with the virus, they've pushed some of those dates back. So if you go on there, they try and keep the website up to date for, for if there's any delays or anything like that, or just out of abundance of caution, they may move those dates back, too. But you can definitely go through the website, and they have lots of information out there.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I have something. I want to share this with you all. I have been doing conference calls with all nonprofit agencies who are serving our community, keeping up with, with the needs in the community and how they are being handled, how they are handling the adults in the community. We're working on children and, and schools and that, et cetera. And of course, the schools are totally in charge of that. But I have been pleased with what our nonprofit people have been doing. Region 10 has been continuing to serve people with substance abuse. I've also talked with Lafayette School. They are serving their children. They are, are doing Zooming, or they are doing FaceTime. Social Services has a box set up outside. Their people are working. People can call in. They can get SNAP. MACA, Sarah Hanks, and Tamika Albright Braveheart, who is our recently appointed Board to MACA, has put the groundwork down for us. The Food, MACA Food Pantry has been feeding people. People have donated funds to E.W. Thomas and order for Bertha and Cassie to order food. So I think next Monday, we will have another call through. Just, we've even talked to people who are working with veterans. So I just wanted you to know that, as a Board member, I'm trying to keep up with the agencies that we finance through our budget, and to make sure that people with the least, with the greatest need are also being served.
Thank you, ma'am. We do appreciate it. I saw your email the other day, and I saw you had that written in there. That's another thing where we need to do a good job of going around and checking on our neighbors, keeping our distance, but making sure that we're checking in on elderly. And that's just something, the new way of business, I guess, best way to put it. Thank you, ma'am. All right. I will now open the first round of public comment. I know we have one comment. Do you want me to read this, or?
I don't necessarily know that it's necessary to read it, but someone else said, obviously, we had the first round of public comments, but due to the, due to the, that this is not a public meeting, and we're kind of working where through the virtual meeting, we had sent out information earlier, and it was actually yesterday, that the meeting was not going to be a public meeting, public was not going to be here. But we encouraged those members of the public that had comments, they could email them, they could send them through My2Cent, et cetera. So we, we did receive one public, public comment, and I provided, we emailed that comment to the Board, and we provided the Board with the most recent hard copy of that as well. We will put that comment in, in, in the, the public record in, in the minutes, so it'll, it'll be reflected.
I would suggest that you identify, identify the.
Okay.
The person, sure.
This.
And the general substance, yeah.
This basically is come from Miss Patty Reiner to Broken Island. She's talking about the tax rate and just trying to do as best we can to keep the tax rate as low as possible for those that are being affected by the pandemic. Yes, I read it also. Yes, sir. I think that, that's just kind of summed it up. General, do the best we can to keep the tax rate as low as we can to, to. Not put any more burden on people than we. Exactly. To lessen the burden on people.
Yep. The, the actual contents of, of, of the comment itself will, will be, will be in the minutes.
All righty. And that's the only one that we have. I will now close the first round of public comment. Next, we have no public hearings. Next, we will move forward with our action matters. First action matter up is D, FY20 Bank Franchise Tax Refund for Branch Banking and Trust Company for Tax Years 2012 to 2014. Ms. Twisdale?
Okay. Eric, I guess I'll go clip on the words there.
Hang on just a second. Ms. Eager and Mrs. Booker, can y'all hear Ms. Twisdale?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Ms. Twisdale, you might want to just walk up closer to the table, ma'am.
I can't hear.
We're, we're, we're having a snap through electronically right now, ma'am. So we're just trying to, we're trying to find the. And it is D.
This is FY20 BBNT Bank Franchise Tax Refund. Does everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, great. Savannah County receives bank franchise tax revenue through the state of Virginia each year for banks that do business in the county. BBNT filed revised tax return in 2016, which was in the period of time they had to, to file these. And they've kind of been dragging through the state, I guess, being reviewed. Ultimately, the Tax Commissioner did come back and say that they had overpaid their fees. And all the localities and cities and municipalities in the state that receive these bank transfer fees from BBNT are being required to refund their local portion that was an overpayment that came to us. Normally, when we do a refund, we would refund it out of revenue, because revenue is normally within the same year. Because this is so old, we're having to go to BOs contingency and ask for the money to pay for it, because there is no current revenue to refund it out of. This is, this is an old deal.
Goes back to 212, which to me is absurd.
Right. Yeah. The Tax Commissioner, this is his conclusion that just says that we unfortunately, all of us, need to refund this money, and then go to the next slide to do it. And then the amount that Savannah County is, that they're asking for, you can see on the screen for 12, 13, and 14, is thirty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. This is due by May 1st, thus the reason we're holding it in this meeting. And this is something that we do have to get to them by May 1st. This isn't something we have an option to do. Mr. Payne reviewed it, the Commissioner of Revenue reviewed it, the Treasurer reviewed it. We pretty much beat it to death, and we don't have any options here. So.
I mean, we can't hold a great year?
No, we can't.
And, and, and a lot of localities went back, and then, and they were kind of disputing it and then trying to fight it. Because, you know, thirty-two thousand for us is big, but if you can see, I mean.
Oh, it's bigger.
Fairfax County has to refund 1.5 billion.
Now, the end is this, we don't have to pay any interest on this money, because that could have been painful. This is just the amount that we actually receive that we are refunding.
And that whole amount came to three million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in refunds. Clear back that far away.
Can I just get the book?
Crazy.
I'll tell you, never stops. All righty. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the Board? Ladies, do y'all have any questions?
No, no, thanks.
All righty. Hearing no questions, I will now.
No.
Do, do we have a motion?
I move Board of Supervisors to approve a budget transfer from FY20 BOs contingency to the FY20 Board of Supervisors budget for a BBT Bank Franchise Tax Refund in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars for the tax years 2012 to 2014, per the Commonwealth and Virginia Department of Taxation.
Second. Motion's made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Weaver. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Ms. Booker? Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Chair votes A. Motion passes five zero. Yes, ma'am. I got you. Got you twice. Yes, ma'am. All righty. The next one, action matter is FY21 Employee Health Insurance Plan. Ms. Rice?
What do you want me to pull up first, Ms. Rice?
I think you can pull the slide up.
The, the brief or the, or just one of the documents? Do you want the, the termination or the, or the, we should probably do the termination first?
Yeah, we can talk through it. Actually, do the health.
You have it number one.
I do.
Okay. So during the FY21 budget preparations and planning, we went out for proposals for our toy health insurance. We did have three proposals come back. Our current carrier, Cigna, came back with a nineteen point four seven percent increase. BPA came back with a 1.3 percent increase. And then the Local Choice, which is the governmental pool here in Virginia, came out with a twenty-one point seven four percent. came out with a 21.74% decrease over our premiums from last year. And so um, the board has indicated that they would like to switch over to Anthem, the Local Choice, for this upcoming FY21 fiscal year as far as the health insurance goes. Um, in order to do that, we will need to do two different things. The first thing would be to provide Cigna with notice um that they will no longer be our carrier. And that provision allows for 30 days notice, written notice. And there's a letter drafted in the um in the in the packet for you to look at. That was looked at by our attorney's office as well. And then part two would be, there's an adoption agreement that would need to be signed with the Local Choice and that has a deadline of May 1st to be able to join back in to that health plan.
So just a couple of things for the board to re to remember. So this doesn't mean, now, the board has decided on an option to go with the Anthem Health Plan, but but by the board saying we want to terminate with Cigna and we want to move forward with Anthem, that just means we're we're getting our application in and we're moving forward. So within the next week or two, if the board decided that they wanted to make any changes hypothetically, they could, but this is just allowing us to get the paperwork in. We have to notify Anthem within a certain period of time.
Sixty days.
Sixty days, sixty days. So this allows us to start moving forward. And then if the board had, if the board, you know, if they want to stay where they are or they want to tweak what's there, they have that, they have that option at this point. But this just allows us to move forward with with Anthem, so.
Okay.
All right, are you ready for a motion?
Uh, I am ready for a motion.
I move that the Board Supervisors approve discontinuation of Flavanna County's current Cigna four-tier health dental and vision plans effective on the expiration date of June the 30th, 2020.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Ms. Booker? Yes, ma'am. Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Got you, ma'am.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero.
Just just one thing to let the board know as 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 Mrs. Booker and Mrs. Eager are there, there is a slight delay in in what's occurring, what they hear versus, yeah. Yeah, there 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 is a slight delay, so just just to let you know.
Well, uh, next, you all need to listen to me hopefully not butcher her name too bad. Yeah.
We have another.
Oh, I'm sorry, the second motion, sorry. Uh, do we have a second motion?
I move that the Board of Supervisors accept the proposal, the Local Choice Anthem TLC Health Insurance Plan, effective July 1st, 2020, and authorize the county administrator to execute the TLC Program Adoption Agreement and Memorandum of Understanding.
Second.
Motion's made by Ms. Eager, seconded by Mr. Weaver. Uh, Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
And then Mr. O'Brien, yes, ma'am.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. Now we will move forward with presentations. F, VDOT Secondary Six-Year Plan Review and Discussion. Ms. Bethel? Kefi Alu? Kefi Alu, gosh, I told you I'm getting better. Oh, she brought backup, I'm getting worried.
Let's do this, we'll have you sit, pull up a seat right over here. Just too close to the, close to my phone and I'll I'll move forward with everything.
I've also got hard copies. Do you want hard copies of the work, the packet?
Don't, I don't, you want one, Mr. Weaver?
Uh, we might need something sometime to look at. It might be a good idea. We usually get a copy, so. Probably getting lost in all my other stuff, but I can look for it.
All right, well, I have too many then. All right, yeah, I'm just gonna review the the packet with you guys and walk through, you know, any questions that you have um for the next fiscal year, so. Go to the third page, next page. So this is the draft plan, so the FY2021, 2020, 2021, that's gonna be next year. And then the last um row, the 2025 to 2026 is what's we're expecting for um the FY26 fiscal year. So we're expecting another allocation of about 96,000. Um, but we have at this point no clue what the the budget is going to be for that next allocation. It hasn't been approved yet. Usually, it isn't approved until after the public hearing. So um, we can't really speak to that right now, but really what we want to focus on um for you guys is to um plan what your priority is gonna be for the secondary six-year plan. So that's what we'll kind of talk about today.
The state sales tax, will that help on this in the future? Will more funds come over to us with the sales tax? That's a, it's going, that, what he
The online, the online sales tax.
Uh huh, gasoline tax.
Gas.
Uh huh.
Well.
There's gonna be two raises in that within the next two years. So I'm just curious how that works then.
I'm not entirely sure. So the there are two different types of funding that you guys get. There's, if you want to go back, back one slide. It's the telefee funds and the district grant unpaved. The district grant unpaved is based on the number of unpaved roads you have in the county. So that's why that allocation is so low because you have very few unpaved roads still in the county. And the telefee funds is based on a fee that we receive from telecommunications companies for um being in our, you know, VDOT easement across the state, across across the county. So I'm not really sure entirely what, you know, how that'll affect the sales tax, but I can ask and look into it.
Gasoline tax.
The gas tax, yeah.
I think it's already been approved.
I'm not sure.
Uh, Mr. Dahl, this is Trish. Um, I I don't see the presentation, it's just got um F. Can you put that up?
We're trying to work on it right now. Just the tech, the technical whiz kids just walked in and their heads were shaking, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's good.
You seen this, Eager?
Yep. Yes.
Good, well, thanks everyone for bearing with us. This is our first uh first live meeting, so we're we're working out the kinks a little bit here.
It's working well.
Okay.
Yeah.
You go to the next slide?
Yes, I'll go to this slide. So you might, see if you can turn the page.
One more time, there we go.
All right, okay. So this is the current plan from last year's um public hearing. Uh, just one, but again, but you have the telefee fund and the district grant paid. The district grant paid can only be used for unpaved roads in the county with uh vehicles per day of 50 and higher. And then the tele, I can use for, and like, this is all secondary roads. Telefee funds can be used for, you know, any secondary road paved or unpaved. And it doesn't matter if it's what the um vehicles per day is on the road. You can go to the next. Just wanted to point out, so currently there are four, I think it's actually five projects. So the South Boston 618 intersection improvements, um, that's still on plan. The schedule, um, the schedule's gone on, on schedules. Uh, we are applying for smart scale funding for that to cover some additional costs. Um, the um Main Street survey is um still in progress. The Stage Junction Road Survey has been completed and we're reviewing that right now. The Middle Fork Road, rural rustic, has been completed and the Old Fork Lane um was fully funded um last year. So um, once, you know, for the next fiscal year, you're only really gonna have two projects, two current projects. It'll be the Old Fork Lane and the South Boston Intersection Improvements. And so you do, you will have some kind of bandwidth maybe to add a project if you guys would like to for the next fiscal year. Um, and then in the next slide, these are the, just they're balance entry accounts. It's all telefee money, um, so it can be used on any secondary road uh in the in the county paved or unpaved. But again, this is from last year's plan, so the numbers will be updated for the next year because you, um, the county did um transition, I think it was 125,000 to the 53 618 um smart scale project. And so the total um amount that you've got for the balance entry right now is 126,325.
Is that after, is that after the 125? Okay, so if if members of the board, when we, when when the bids came back on the 53 618 around about, they were a little short and in what it was. So I came to the board and some of these funds, the telefee funds, were transferred to that project. Make sure it headlighting and everything, so we will have 100 points available.
Yes. Yep. For the rest of it, um, rotate it again. Really just for your own situational awareness, these are all of the secondary roads in the county. Again, to add a project to the to the list, um, you'd really be focusing on unpaved, probably if you want to do a rural rustic project. So you could probably just skip to the, close to the end, but.
I'm, I was gonna ask, I'm not sure, is it a state road that goes down into Pleasant Grove that's paved all the way to the cul-de-sac?
It is, that's that's a VDOT road.
That's a VDOT road. I wonder if we could extend that down to the baseball field and put the cul-de-sac down to the baseball field.
We've, we've, we've talked to VDOT, VDOT a lot.
When you talk about the 50 cars per day, that's the average. It doesn't have to be 50 every day, but because we have so many go through there on Saturdays and Sundays, that it would have a 50-car average.
Right.
Not right now, but I mean, on a normal Saturday and Sunday, we have 500, I mean, 300 cars go down through there each day.
Good point.
If we could extend that down.
You can see right here, it says Pleasant Grove Drive.
Uh, that's why, I thought I remembered somebody saying that that was. Then that that would be, if we had a rural rustic road, that if we could extend that another quarter of a mile, um, it's just, we got, that's where our baseball and our soccer fields are.
So you'd want to extend it.
If we just extended it, maybe a half a mile.
Because of, because the majority of the traffic goes past that cul-de-sac where her dead dead ends at. That goes way back to the end where the where the fields are.
It goes back to the back end of the fields back there.
Well, I'm wondering if, is there an end of state maintenance sign? Because it might be that beyond that cul-de-sac, it's not a state road.
Well, I don't know if we could.
Go down another route.
Just stay that way. Just a thought.
Yeah.
Because we do have a monstrous amount of traffic going down through there. Thank goodness.
Well, I'll look into it.
I I have a question. I've heard from a man named Quinter Garrison. He lives on Blue Ridge, Blue Ridge Lane, and he was hoping that there could be a right turn lane off of 250 onto Blue Ridge Lane.
Right before Oliver Creek, between the prison and Oliver Creek.
Um, I think that for right turn lane, our traffic engineers would have to do a right turn lane analysis, do some counts, things like that. But if if you could um send me an, maybe an email.
That's 250, so it's gonna be a lot of traffic.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic and right now they're, you know, it's on the side where the water pipe is being put in. And he thought it might be a good time because um, because after the water pipe is in, then the turn lane could go in. It's pretty.
Here, I'll I'll send an email to Bethel um tomorrow, reminding her about that, that take a look into that.
Okay, later I'll give you his phone numbers as well.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Basically, we want to look at the, so the unpaved, yeah. So this slide has got all of the um roads that are unpaved in the county. And so if you wanted to add a project to the secondary six-year plan, you'd really be working off of this list and the next one, which has the qualifying unpaved. Because to use the un, the district grant unpaved funds, it has to be over 50 vehicles per day. But a lot of these counts um are from 2014, so we can always do a more recent count to see if the the um, the traffic count has increased in the last six years. So this is kind of what we're working with. If you wanted to add a a project to the plan, um, I think that VDOT's recommendation is to um to not add a plan and or try to add a project and instead to bank some of your funds into one of our balance entry accounts um so that you can use them for, you know, whatever, whether it's, you know, uh.
Work's the one we're doing right now.
Old Fork Lane is the one that's on the plan, right? I guess anything highlighted is what's currently on the plan, yeah.
Are you going to get any accurate traffic under the circumstances now?
I asked about that and they think that, they feel confident that they can get traffic counts. In time for you. Well, that's true too.
If if we're requesting something, we may want to wait a month or two for for traffic counts.
Please go to June 10.
Yes.
I have a correction on this. Um, you have White Hill Road, it's called White Hall.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any roads that you have been thinking about paving?
We've talked about Turner Road for a while. I mean, that's. You've done traffic studies on that.
Okay.
The Two County Road, I believe, I'll break, that's the one up in the northeast corners. Only about three or four houses down that road, it's not very long.
And 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 this, when you say traffic count, is this, is this to and from each day? So if you have.
Yes.
It might be a time to do the uh traffic count on Turner Road again.
Okay.
You know, later on, um, because they've added about four or five houses on that road. And if it was paved, there would be more people using it probably to cut through.
What about with what's going on at Brimmo Bluff, are there any opportunities there? With the ash?
Um, I mean. Brimmo Road, VDOT, VDOT did a nice job repairing on Brimmo Road. As far as I can see, I've been down there.
West Bottom as well.
You've been, yeah.
Yes, ma'am, West, West Bottom Road as well looks, looks pretty good.
Well, yeah, it does.
There may be future conversations with Dominion that are going on what they're doing with 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 their facility down there.
Right, I mean, so this is really, at this point, it's kind of the board's decision whether or not they would like to add a project. And they can, if you have a road that you'd like us to do traffic counts, like I've written down Turner Road, we can do that and get back to you with cost estimate for the project. Um, again, the expectation is about 96,000 for the next fiscal year's allocations. Um, and, you know, our recommendation is to put that, those funds into a balance entry account and, you know, and at a later date, you can decide where to allocate those funds.
I'm just sitting there, I'm going back to the Pleasant Grove Road if we could. I don't know what it would take to get a half a mile of that allocated into the state program. To get that, that one would be the highest need, I would welcome all of them.
If it is a state road.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear us, Ms. Booker? Ms. Booker, can you hear us now?
It's coming, it's in and out.
Yes, ma'am, yours is too, I'm not sure what's going on in connection.
It's, I hear.
You're telling me I'm loud again? Yes, ma'am. Uh, go ahead.
So it is, if it is a state road, then and we can go ahead and take a look at if we, if it qualifies for the rural rustic program. If not, then it might qualify for the um, for a rural addition program, in which case you could use the telefee funds to pave it.
Okay. We looked into it and talked about doing it. They were gonna try to do a grant, um, and then that fell through, so. So that, that is definitely the most traveled dirt road in Levanna County. And I don't know about to rest y'all, but I probably get more complaints about people, people going down there. And we're putting, adding, doing the little addition to the playground, so it'll just add more to it.
Okay, well, I can look into and get back to you.
Thank you so much.
What's possible. And then once, you know, project selected and all of that, we'll have to do a public hearing and put together a resolution in time, like by June.
You have to do it by June, okay. We will, Caitlin will be in contact with you and we'll work out how we're going to do that with, with the world of the 19.
I completely understand, and actually, if you do think that it would be difficult to do that quickly, we can let our central office know and they can, they can.
Push it back a little bit, thank you so much. Well, thank you so much for coming out, and Mr. Shiflett, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave you out, I forgot to call your name.
Daryl could not make it.
This is not Daryl.
This is not Daryl.
My other brother Daryl.
This is Aaron French.
Thank you for coming out, I see you brought your bodyguard. It's a rough place out here.
It's my bodyguard sometimes, my driver other times, yeah.
Exactly.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all for coming out, we do appreciate it, thank you for what y'all do. We'll now move forward with consent agenda. G, minutes of March 11th, 2020. I H, minutes of March 18th, 2020. I, Child Abuse Prevention Month Proclamation. J, EMS MC Incorporated Amendment One, Ms. Toller. K, CRMF Boiler Tube Replacement at Court's Building. L, CRMF Safety Handrail for Maccas Sidewalk. Is there anything we want to pull?
I just want to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
Basically, on the K and L, they fixed a boiler tube replacement. And I just wanted to comment, that was in-house, which I think that we're starting to save some money there. Because I think that probably would have cost twice as much as what they did. And you also had pictures on that, I thought that was very good. And same goes for L, you had pictures on that, so it really identifies it pretty well, what you're doing.
Good, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to do that if, if that helps the board.
And that's all I have, that's your ready.
Thank you so very much. All right, is there, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda G through L.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Got a motion made by Mr. Weaver, signed by Mr. O'Brien, Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Weaver? Mr. Weaver? Okay, Mr. O'Brien?
Aye, aye.
Then Chair votes aye, motion passed at five zero. All right, is there any unfinished business?
Yes, so Mr. Chair, if you remember before, as, as I said, to just kind of be efficient with our time and then eliminate having to be out and about more than we really need to. You know, we thought we would move up the budget work session that was scheduled for 7:00 PM and get into that discussion. For, under the unfinished business and then it's kind of start to go through.
Mr. Payne, we're okay doing this?
Oh yeah, we could, yeah, we could get it bring, yeah.
Yeah, yes, sir, I think you, I think you, Mr. Doll, it suggested that you use this space to ratify your actions from, from your last meeting.
Ah, that's true, so do we have a motion to ratify our actions from your last meeting?
So may, second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Weaver, signed by Mr. O'Brien, all, uh, Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Oh, do they vote on this?
It would be.
No, it's just, just the three of us?
No, they can vote.
Okay, so Ms. Eager?
Aye.
Ms. Booker?
Hi.
Mr. Weaver?
Hi.
And the Chair votes aye, motion passes five zero. All righty, so, so let's go ahead and go get our budget work session.
Yeah, so a little, let me just move forward.
May, I have.
Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am?
I just forwarded, I just forwarded an email to Eric that should have come during public comment.
We will add that to the. We will add that to our previous comment and I'll, we'll talk about that, it's the second public comment, ma'am.
All right.
So I guess what we'll go through first, Ms. Twisdale, do you want to kind of go through, we'll go through some revenue updates first, I guess?
Sure. I'm good.
You're standing?
Yeah. So, given the current situation, we've started looking at FY21 and FY20 revenues. The most recent sales tax estimate from the state came out of March 25th. And their estimate for sales tax is 1.9 million dollars, and we had budgeted 1.8. Now, as to how much of this is taking into any of the virus situation is kind of up in the air. At this point, it's early and these are the most current estimates that we have. The recredation tax, we had budgeted 375,000, the state came back and said we'd probably end up with 116,000. The reason for that is, they have taken 20% of the recredation tax and are diverting it to.
I'm seeing it here in half of her report.
Can you speak a little slower?
Yes, yeah.
So they have taken half, they've taken half of the 40%.
Internet's been acting terrible at my house, I'm gonna guess that that's going on with your internet also, Ms. Booker.
Ms. Booker, can you hear us?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I hear you fine, but then when, when Marianne, I hear two or three words and then it, nothing, static.
It breaks out, we'll, we'll, we'll speak up.
The recredation tax, we budgeted 375,000 dollars. The state is estimating we'll receive 116,187 dollars. The reason for that is they are diverting half of the recredation tax that they normally give to all localities. For transportation to Northern Virginia Hampton Roads. So unfortunately, if their estimate is true, that cuts us by about two-thirds for recredation tax. So with the current estimates that they're giving us, that leaves us with a deficit of about 156,000 dollars that we had expected to receive. Now again, these are estimates and things are certainly subject to change based on the current conditions. And at this point, they can't tell us when they're going to give us updated numbers.
I mean, they, they do this, but I don't see how they can just come in and take an amount like that. When historically, it hasn't been done to my knowledge, and, you know, it just doesn't make sense.
So, so as, as COVID-19 is going around, and I think we kind of briefly discussed this at the last budget work session too. We had discussed, you know, what, what do we think, how is this going to affect our budget, how's it going to affect revenues? Is it going to affect sales tax, is it going to affect anything else? Is it going to affect people paying their, their personal property taxes or real estate taxes? Does it affect the penalties and interest that they pay? So I'll let Marianne to talk a little bit about just kind of some of the, the real estate and personal property stuff. And then we've got a whole slide to kind of discuss some things that could or could not be affected and, and just some things you need to take into consideration.
So basically, our 21, FY21 real estate tax collection rate is calculated at 97.5%.
That's what we budgeted.
That's what we budgeted. Our personal property collection rate, we budgeted at 94.5%. Should we decide that we want to lower those expectations? Every 1% that we reduce that collection rate is going to affect our collections by that, that much.
Basically, if, if, if you reduce both collection rates by 1%, you're basically affecting one cent.
Now, with that, I will tell you, and I understand this is a different situation because of what's going on. But in FY19, based on our budgeted amounts, we collected 100% of real estate tax. Now, maybe we didn't budget enough, but we collected 100% of our, of our budgeted amount. And we collected 123% of our delinquent real estate taxes that we budgeted.
So we always budget for delinquent amounts and, because you just never know. There were some years where I think we budgeted 300,000, I think we got in like 180,000 one year. So we are always being conservative with what we expect to come in from delinquent real estate taxes and personal property taxes. And if we do better than that, then that's great, then that just kind of goes back into fund balance to build our fund balance up.
Personal property, we collected in 19, 98%. And delinquent personal property in 19, we collected 203%. So I'm not necessarily recommending that we reduce these collection rates, I understand things could happen. Where we're at right now for FY20, for the first half of FY20 real estate, we collected 98% of that tax, 98, yeah, 98. For delinquent real estate for the year, we're at 92.9. For personal property for the first six months, we're at 92.9, and for delinquent personal property for the year, we're at 113%. So we've already met our budget for FY20 for our delinquent personal property halfway through the year.
Now, my one question would be this, and I brought this up to you earlier, yesterday, I can't remember. Would we want to extend the period, the due date is June 5th?
June 5th, we had, we had discussed this with Mr. Payne's office too, and, and I know they've been doing some research, I don't know, possibly. You know, whether it's we leave the tax due date, but maybe don't have any penalties, maybe until June 30th or something like that. Obviously, if we can get payments in in this fiscal year, that's going to be a benefit, that's going to be a benefit to this fiscal year. But we understand what's happening. You know, what we have here is, we have a list of all revenues that we think could be affected by what's going on right now. And, and, and probably more so, I would see some of these revenues being affected in the current fiscal year that we're in fiscal year 20. Because if you think about that, we've got June 5th as our tax collection date. So we've only collected one half of, of taxes for the year so far. Now, I think real estate, and this is my, this is just my assumption. I think for real estate taxes, mostly, primarily, a lot of people have mortgages on their homes and generally escrows that real estate taxes are going to be collected. So I think in light of, and unfortunately, there, there may be some folks that are out of work right now because of that. Now, would the real estate taxes be affected as much as the personal property taxes? I think not, because of the escrow component of that. But you certainly, if, if individuals are, are, you know, having to choose between feeding my family and paying real estate taxes. I'm, me personally, I'm going to feed my family. But I mean, you know, these are just a lot of different things we have to take into account. And I think some of these, as I said, could have an effect on fiscal year 21, but I think some of them may. In the more immediate future, maybe they're going to affect our current budget year too.
But we're worried about our current year.
Yeah, but, but we're, we're not talking about one of the main sources of taxes. And let me read this here in the paper. I'm more concerned about not so much this year, but the next year, and that's what this alludes to. It says that Richmond starts off, Virginia top financial official says the state is likely to lose at least one billion. In revenue in each year of the pending two-year budget, and that's the best scenario. And it goes on to say, the pessimistic, oh. The pessimistic alternative would reduce state revenue by about one billion in the first year. And two billion in the second, compared to the standard economic outlook adopted by the advisory group of the business leaders and legislators.
Now here's where, and that's, that's true, but here's where we have an advantage. Let's take Williamsburg, for example. Williamsburg gets 50% of their revenue from meals tax, tourism tax.
Transit.
Transit occupancy tax, that's where 50%, that came out today, that's where 50% of their revenue comes from. We aren't driven by those revenues.
The only time it's good to be 97.5%.
This, honestly, this is, I mean, a lot of localities that rely on meals tax, you know, hotel tax.
Tourist in general.
Yeah, all that stuff, people tax.
Retail tax.
Yes.
But do you think the state is going to give the school another million dollars next year?
So, so that's the thing, the, the state budget will be, the state budget is in clutch and has not been approved yet. Now. You know, I'm not sure how, how we move forward with some of this. You know, we've got, we've got a deadline to approve a budget by, as, as I stated earlier. There's some localities that are trying to pump their budget for a while. There's some localities that are saying, you know, we're going to approve our last year's budget and just keep it going. And then we'll readdress it with, you know, maybe mid-year or something like that. You know, from the state piece, I don't think a lot of our, from the county side, now, now, I'm leaving the schools out of it at this point. From the county side, fortunately, we don't rely on an overly, overly large abundance of, of state revenues that come in. You know, our biggest piece is, is our local revenues. And as we said, it is fortunate for the one time that we do not have other real revenue leverage to pull from. Because we maybe will be a little more insulated from what's happening right now because of that.
Our businesses are still running, our bigger businesses, they're cutting trees, they're still making power over to power plant. And our grocery stores are, they're working to death.
I know, that doesn't, that does not negate that we have some businesses that are struggling and, and, and there may be some businesses that are out of business right now because of that. They had to close their doors, yes. But, you know, so, so these, this list right here is just some of those items that we think could be affected in this fiscal year. And as, as, as Ms. Twisdale said, I think because of what's going on, and that doesn't mean that things won't be affected in 21. But if, when the coronavirus subsides and, and, and the public tries to get back to some sense of normalcy. I think people will be swarming to get out of their house and doing what they can, but it still doesn't negate that there's going to be businesses that maybe won't recover from this.
And I think what we're going to see are, it seems to me what we would possibly see is taxes that are due June 5th that currently, right now, people can't pay. Hopefully, this thing won't go on forever, and once it subsides and people do go back to work, at that point, they will hopefully have the ability to then pay those taxes.
Which would be in the next fiscal year.
Taxes from FY20 to FY21. So I'm worried about, I'm not, not that I'm not worried about 21, but I'm more concerned about the immediate 20, that there's really nothing we can do about that at this point. But ride the wave and see what happens, kind of thing. So I feel like we'll collect taxes that we're doing 20 and 21, that may help cover a little bit of the stuff in 21 we don't get.
Do you think we should give relief if someone is late and charge them no interest?
I would say until the end of the month of June, if they get it in before the end of the month of June. Yeah, I mean, that's. We can revisit that, I mean, keep it as June 5th.
I think you could make it, you could make it a little bit more generic by just saying, you know, within 30 days of the stay, stay at shelter at home for being or sending. Because it could go on for another six months.
Yeah, well, what they're talking about is, we want to try and get it before the end of the fiscal year. And if we can do that, I mean, we can always revisit this and say, we're still not going to charge you interest, but that's when we'd like to get it done by. Until we have the money.
Do we have the authority to say we're not going to charge? Or does that, that's already come out?
Treasury.
Yeah, so we don't have that authority.
Well, I'm, I'm sure the Treasury would respect your view.
She had brought that up to me as an option, so I, I don't think, I think she would, I mean, I can't speak.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
But she had brought that up, so I think she would be.
This has been discussed with Commissioner and Treasurer, kind of, you know, especially regarding, you know, how and when are we, you know, approve our budget. Say, say for instance, that we couldn't approve our budget in a certain period of time, it takes them some time to get all the bills out and get everything going. So let's just say that generally the tax due date is June 5th, well, say the bills don't go out until, I'm just, you know, a random date. Say they don't go out till the last, you know, week of May. Well, a one to two week turnaround time isn't necessarily fair to have it June 5th, so then you would back that up. So we, we've had these discussions regarding that. But in addition, you know, we need to look at the bigger picture too, that, that with the, with the, with the stay at home order and, and some individuals not working. And, you know, we need to take that into consideration. you know, we need to take that into consideration, that we may want to bump back the penalty and interest period for those individuals. And, and I don't know if it's, you know, thirty days from, from, from the original date of June fifth, whether it's thirty days, as Mr. O'Brien suggested, from the governor's stay-at-home order or some other arbitrary date that you want to come up with.
Who makes that decision? Who has that authority?
That is for treasurer.
Treasurer. So we can want all we want to.
But I.
If they don't want to do it.
I would think from the board standpoint, if the board had, if the board had a recommendation for what they would, what they would recommend, I think.
In other words, a recommendation made to the treasurer.
Made to the treasurer, I think the treasurer would, would take that into serious consideration. So, but, so, but anyway, so, so, you know, we're kind of talking about two things. We are talking about the budget discussion for FY twenty-one and, and we could see some, 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 some changes with the revenues. We are certainly also concerned with FY twenty, obviously FY twenty, um, you know, how are we going to pay for things? You know, we had discussed in my proposed budget, I had using fund balance to pay for some CIP items. Those were, uh, those items were taken out of being used for fund balance and then it was put in to use debt service to pay for that, um, for the CIP items. Depending on how the board wants to go with that, you know, I'm more concerned with the revenues coming in this year and where we end up with fund balance at the end of fiscal.
And the revenues next year.
Correct. I'm, I'm also concerned about that, but how we end up in this fiscal year, so.
I think we should do our very best to, um, keep our expenses as low as possible, even if it means, um, putting things off because this is such a uncertain time.
And, and we've talked about that as far as getting in touch with each department and, and, you know, obviously, nobody's doing any training right now anyway because they can't travel. And, you know, there are some, there are some things that departments could possibly not do in their operating budget. Unfortunately, most of their operating budgets are not real fluffy, so, um, a lot of it is, is stuff that's kind of, you know, we, we have to continue with. We, we've got something weird up there.
Yeah, Mr. Chuck Winkler just entered the.
Oh, okay. Um, so what, what I did do, oh, Mr. Goll, Ms. McIver and I went back, balance options for FY twenty and things that we could possibly perhaps put off, um, out of the CIP that would give us a little bit more money in fund balance. Right now, we have two hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars in the historic courthouse line. We haven't really done any work on the historic courthouse because it turns out that really wasn't enough. And so we've kind of had that parked there to work on the historic courthouse. We have, Mr. Sharon will be horrified to see this, but we have the paving at Pleasant Grove, um, that, that's been sitting out there for a while that we haven't done anything with because that really isn't enough to do that either. Um, we have the cash funded ambulance that we have not purchased yet. Um, we have the library and sheriff's potable water project that's honestly been out there for five years that, that's not been done. And Recote, the middle school wait for treatment plant's been out there since twenty fourteen and hasn't been done. So if we were to, I guess for lack of a better word, cancel those particular projects, that would give us six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars we could possibly put back in fund balance to use as a little bit of a cushion against whatever's going to happen this year with our revenue.
Yeah, I mean, so, so, yeah, so as, as Mrs. Eager said, to, to go back to, you know, we can't necessarily freeze all expenditures. Um, you know, obviously, the biggest part of, of the county's budget and the school's budget is, um, is personnel. So, you know, uh, uh, unless, unless the county wanted to, and I'm not suggesting this on any means, furlough staff, that's the only, you know, big area. Now, if you want to put some money and, and put some money back into fund balance as kind of a, a cushion, you could take those projects and, and, and potentially uncommit or unfund those and then put it back into fund balance if, if, if the board's concerned about having, having a cushion or having a reserve. You know, we, we're, we're definitely in some, in some trying, uh, trying times right now and they're a little uncertain. We're not sure how quickly this is going to pass with COVID nineteen, what it, what it means for our revenues, what it means for our budget, what it means for our citizens for the current fiscal year and, and, and much less going into fiscal year twenty-one as well. You know, I, I had a conversation with Mr. Winkler today. Mr. Winkler, are you on now?
He's muted.
Okay.
I am, I am.
Okay, so, okay, so, so Mr. Winkler and I, will we, um, we, we talked today too about, you know, obviously, from the school standpoint, you know, they've, you know, they could be affected in fiscal year twenty as well, as well as fiscal year twenty-one. And, you know, Mr. Winkler, do you want to talk about what, what type of measures you're going through for fiscal year twenty?
Okay, so for fiscal year twenty, we, we were, we were unable, we had a meeting scheduled tonight with, with the board, but we were unable to have it because we're moving towards a virtual platform as well. So given the parameters, I wasn't able to have some, the discussions that I needed to have. But our plan right now is to continue with, with payroll as it exists. But basically, any expenditures outside of those that are necessary, whatever category that they would be in, um, basically, we're putting a freeze on those. Um, we're going to continue to have order the things that we're absolutely going to need. An example of that would be as we move forward into next year, we're going to need, I'm just throwing out this number, but, uh, you know, two hundred bus tires. We're going to get those two hundred bus tires, but where we had, um, some lawn equipment, bigger ticket items, like we had a law, a larger lawn tractor in, in our budget, we're not buying that at that time. And, and anything basically that we absolutely don't need to continue to do business and we have to be cognizant of the fact of our special ed budget too. Um, within special ed, because it's a federally funded program, we have to do, we have to meet what's called MOE, which is maintenance of effort. So we're cognizant of that and we haven't seen any waivers come out from either the feds or, or the state department, but we have to work within the means there. But the bottom line is, is we've cost that, done a cost analysis out from a payroll standpoint, what it would be to pay our people and I honestly, I won't say the majority of, but many of our folks are, are going above and beyond and working a lot of different hours to try to get, whether it's feeding the kids or making sure we're providing education to the kids and other type of services. Um, we're trying to take care of our people and then, as I said, look at whatever we can, um, to get through the budget year. My biggest concern right now is sales tax.
Yeah, it's going to be down probably.
Oh, there's no question about it. There, um, so, so this year, we're, we're anticipating at least two months be affected. Um, I'm actually more concerned, uh, about the, the effect of sales tax for next year, certainly as we begin the fiscal year. Um, we have a lot of unknowns with our budget, not so much this year, but again, we have the caboose bill yet to come in. Um, our day, our ADM, our average daily membership is right on target, but what that's going to look like, um, from the state level, all indications, and I'm on a conference call tomorrow morning with the state superintendent and the governor, is they're not trying to hit our, our budget this year or even next year, but they can't promise us they're going to hold us harmless. Um, clearly, there's going to be some impact, it's just to what degree, we don't know yet.
I wonder if with the budget, they're going to eliminate the raises in there.
That's, uh, I, I, I think that's Mr. O'Brien, I can hear that, that's certainly one, on, on, on the general assembly's mind. Um, what, what we have heard right now initially is, is they're trying to le, leave those in there. Um, I'm, I'm obviously hoping they do. Uh, the amount of new money that we got for the raises alone was, you know, right around three hundred thousand dollars. Um, I'm just not sure, I'm not sure whether they're going to be able to leave that in or not.
So, so, so some things that the board could do, I mean, obviously, there's, there's, there's a lot of question marks. We could, as we move forward, we can either try and move through and approve, have a budget go forward that we think is, is realistic based upon, you know, maybe we know some new, uh, some, some new projections for maybe some shortage of revenues and then maybe we adjust from the county's budget accordingly. The school's budget, I mean, a, a, a big, a big chunk of their budget is coming from new state revenue. Now, we could approve, we could go forward and try and adopt a budget. And then between when the budget is adopted and prior to July one, if we see that the state budget changes, we can, the board could then go back and, and amend the budget. Um, or we could push the budget adoption off further down the road until we know what the state's going to do. Um, you know, the only thing with that is then that will affect what the commissioner and treasurer can do for getting taxes in for June fifth and the date that that is. So, you know, we're kind of, we're kind of in a little bit of a conundrum here, um, how to move forward.
You know, I say we try to come up with a budget and then if we have to come back and amend it, we amend it, we come back and amend it. That way, we can have everybody moving forward with whatever it is we've got. And if we have to make adjustments, we make adjustments.
Well, the other thing that comes to mind too is, you know, the fund balance is of course going to be affected. Now, granted, it's an emergency and you could even dip into your emergency reserves, but we don't know what that's going to look like. I mean, um, so having cushion inside the budget is necessarily a bad thing because that gets returned to fund balance as well too. So I think trying to have too lean a budget in this kind of, of an environment is probably detrimental down the road. Right? It was in my opinion, I mean, I think you're, you're, you're better off to have some extra cushion inside of it that gets back to fund balance and, and of course, I'm still in favor of taking advantage of the low rates.
You're favorite what?
Taking advantage of the low rates and to not, to, to use that as opposed to use any fund balance right now for, uh, for CIP items.
Um, so, Ms. McIver, you were, and I was kind of, kind of telling you with some others, that there are some other, she was on a conference call with, with a bunch of other localities and finance folks today, weren't you, just kind of give what, what, yeah, what others are.
Let me just add one more thought.
Yeah.
Biggest concern would be around the raises.
Yep.
Right, because, you know, obviously, if this state doesn't provide the raises, we're only providing raises to county employees. That creates that mismatch that we've looked at before, so that would, my biggest concern is creating that uneven fire.
Yep.
Um, so I sat in on a Zoom meeting this afternoon with finance directors, administrators and various finance people throughout the state. Small localities, localities as big as, see, um, Charlottesville was in on it, Virginia Beach was in on it, Roanoke, Landshire. Um, and then there were some smaller areas like, um, Amherst, um, Benton, I was in on it. So there was a wide range of communities in on it. Uh, many of them are moving their public hearings to June. Um, there's a couple of places that are trying to adopt the budget that they currently have, carrying it forward and then will amend later on. Um, almost all the, all the localities that were in on the meetings are stopping all of their CIP spending now. Anything that they are going forward with, for the most part, is, um, projects involving utilities. Um, keeping infrastructure going. They've canceled all training. The majority of counties are thankfully not furloughing people, most have been able to keep everybody on. Um, they're postponing bond issuances. And I will say, Mr. O'Brien, almost everywhere has canceled any debt funding for not, for, because of uncertainty. Um, trying to find out other big things. There's a lot of discussions about schools, a lot of schools that they're concerned about lost revenues for the schools. Um, trying to look and find the biggest, other big things.
Well, and, and I will say this, in, in the Richmond Times, there was one locality, was it Chesterfield?
Chesterfield.
Chesterfields furloughing five hundred people because they rely forty percent of their budget, you know, comes from like meals tax, transient occupancy tax. So again, there are some localities that are going to be hit very hard by this and.
Real estate too, isn't that, isn't that a highway?
But that's not being as affected as much.
Yeah.
Okay, you have to go through the whole foreclosure process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, obviously, there's efforts to not have that happen.
Generally, from the real estate, I mean, if, if there's a mortgage on the property, your mortgage holder is going to pay the real estate taxes. Um, and, and so the real estate piece, that's usually you're a little bit insulated if you have a mortgage on there. You know, the personal property could definitely be, could be affected by individuals if you have a large population that is just out of work.
What's the total of our personal problem?
Um.
Is it a hundred and eighty-five or five hundred and fifty-five?
Oh, of, of the personal property.
That we, yeah, that we collect.
The revenue? Oh, I can.
Oh, it's one point.
No, it's like, it's in here, let's, let's go to this here, I'll, I'll tell you what we have for personal property.
I will say there were a few localities, thankfully only a few, that had furloughed some people, mostly part-time employees. And those were localities that rely on the meals tax, the transient occupancy tax, more, um, those sorts of taxes. And there were several localities that that is the majority of their funds.
So, Mr. O'Brien, between personal property, residential, personal property, business and personal property for public utilities, public utilities being like a Tanaska or Dominion or something like that, we get seven point two million dollars in personal property revenue. Oh.
I was thinking of the business.
But a, but a big portion of that is the utilities. Sure, that's seven point two.
No, that residential, that's just, that's our, urinized cars.
Right, I understand that.
Personal property.
I thought the, uh, Tanaska was a pretty big check.
That's real estate.
Like, I thought, I thought that utilities, like, that still goes under.
That's real estate, because that's, yeah, that's all real estate, so.
When we talked about ninety-four percent.
Yep, so ninety, so seven point two million is personal property and, and, you know, obviously, we have delinquent taxes that people may be, you know, catching up on. So I think that is probably the revenue piece besides sales tax that we could see that would affect us. Yeah. Um, so, let me see here. So just to kind of go back to the budget balance sheet, as the board remembers, we, we advertised, um, we advertised a tax rate of ninety-four five and, um, you know, kind of where we were, my, my budget was ninety-three five. Since, since my budget was proposed, we had some additional revenues and then there are some additional things that the board put in, uh, put into the budget, including two hundred and sixty-nine thousand for debt service for funding all of the, the, the fleet needs. Um, added in, let me go back up to the top. Um, added in an additional sixty-six thousand for, um, employees, uh, employee salaries above my two percent to three percent.
What that, what did that amount to?
Sixty-six thousand. Um, obviously, the big piece, there was the big insurance savings, which, which lowered from the original budget four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, keeping, keeping the insurance rates level. Um, there was some money that the board put in for a sheriff's office pay adjustment. Um, and then the other one, the other really kind of big one was, uh, the schools kind of came back and their original request was six seventy-nine, but kind of after the fact, um, they said they could, that they could make, make their numbers work at three ninety-two, so we added three ninety-two back in there.
That's plus a additional.
Correct.
All right, what, what it look like if you took, went back to your original thing with the vehicle purchases? If we took the debt service off?
I, I think that's a good idea because, uh, I'd like to have a, a better idea of what the force really has and what they need. I don't think that, that, uh, we have a really good picture of, of that. So if we could put it off and, and do some research, I think it would be worth it and.
This will allow us to do research, but I just, we know next year will get worse and we'll likely wiggle room, for lack of a better term, for next year.
Well, I don't think we can go ahead with that.
Well, I mean, you talked about, what was your original thing you were funding? Ninety-four thousand.
Yeah, what, what I originally.
Original plan, if we went back to his original plan.
Well, my original plan was using fund balance, about a million, one point one million dollars. And it funded about half the bus request, half the county fleet request and it funded one of the, one of the fire rescue vehicles, it, it did not fund a couple larger apparatuses.
In my opinion, either you fund any vehicles, period.
Say that again.
In my opinion, either you just fund the CIP for vehicles to next year or you use debt, but to use fund balance right now is a mistake.
I agree.
You could also not fund the CIP right now. And then if something, if, if things gotten better, say October, November, then we could come for supplemental appropriation, let's say the sheriff is out of cars. Yeah, we could come back with a supplemental appropriation for whatever.
That's a good point.
All right, Sheriff, well, hang on, Sheriff, if there was something, y'all had to get the things in by a certain time.
We're, they're past the date anyway. We're, they're past the date anyway.
We're past that date and with them stopping manufacturing cars.
Okay.
We're, I don't know what we're gonna wind up buying to, to get moving. It's, it's gonna be sad throughout the industry.
Right. Yeah, as, as most.
We have to address that for next year. We're gonna be behind for years, years to come.
I mean, we, we, we could, we could go forward with the budget, you know, since we're talking about CIP and, and fund none of the CIP requests that were funded out of, you know, fund balance or anything like that. And, and, and wait to see what happens, you know, if, if, if we get to July, August, September timeframe and, and, you know, we see some type of rebound. Or as we see what revenue, revenues are doing, you know, that's one thing. And especially too, to see where we're ending up for this fiscal year as well.
What was your wedge for the debt servicing?
For the, for the, for all that, it was 269,000.
So even if you leave that in the budget as it stands, don't fund the CIP, then you can get that back in fund balance if we do or don't go with that. That's, that's a pretty nominal amount there. I want to say it's not.
Yeah.
But it is, it is still within the nature of, we have a budget that we're not really a hundred percent sure what's gonna happen with it. And so having flexibility inside that budget is a good thing.
And, and, and what, what we could do too, going back on that thing's delaying. So it's, we, we could move forward with a budget that does not include CIP and then, and then, you know, three, four months into the year. Let's just say that things improved drastically and we want to use fund balance for some reason, or we don't say we want to take out debt at that point. The board can do a budget amendment and if you decide to do debt at that point, you could do it at that point. So we have options to do fund balance or debt even after we adopt this budget, if, if we were to adopt the budget without CIP.
You always take the debt and then you can take the wedge out if you wanted to and then use debt that included wedge next year. Right? I mean, you could, in other words, you could use fund balance out of the, to pay the first installment of the debt.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You're, you're saying fund that, you're saying fund the debt. You're saying move forward with, with funding everything, fund the debt, but pay for the debt with fund balance.
No, 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 what I'm saying is if we do a supplemental budget.
Yep.
Even if we didn't have, say, that 274,000 budget, let's say the board agrees if they don't want to do that for whatever reason. Okay. Then we, we come in in, in October and we say, okay, we want to go ahead and do the supplemental and we have the money there. But we're not gonna pay out of fund balance for the entire amount. We would still look at whether debt makes sense. And then at that point in time, decide whether we're buying this deal or not.
Right.
But you can take that first, first set of installment payments that are due for the debt and use that out of fund balance.
Yeah.
Right? That's not gonna be that much.
Well, but my biggest goal right now is what's going on and what's going on with people's pockets is try and keep us as close to 92.5 as I can.
Or lower.
I don't know if we can go any lower than this eager.
Here, here's.
We, we can try, but if, if we could come out somewhere around 92.5.
Here's, here, here's the one thing, just remember if you do 92.5, I mean, if you went lower than 92.5, and I'm not saying the board can do whatever it wants. Just, just keep in mind, remember, the tax rate that the board adopts for, let's just say it's April 15, that affects the taxes for June 5th. And if you are adopting a tax rate lower than what we have, you're going to get less revenues. But now our budget is slightly skewed. For fiscal year 20, for the current budget year we are in.
Say that again.
With, so, so, so Mrs. Eager, so if, if, let's just say, you, you know, let's say the board says, well, we want to go down to, I said. Yeah, let's, we're at 92.5 right now, but say we want to go, the board wants to go below 92.5, they want to go down to 92 cents. So whatever tax rate the board adopts, say it's April 15th. That tax rate goes into effect for calendar year 20, which will affect the taxes that are coming June 5th. So when we adopted our budget for fiscal year 20, we adopted, assuming a full collection period based upon a tax rate of 92.5. But if the board changes that to say 92, we're going to get less revenue come June 5th, which if, if revenue is going to be suspect in the second half, I don't necessarily know if lowering it would be the best thing to do.
Well, how much, if you lowered, lowered it by a half a cent, how much less are you going to cut?
Uh, I don't have that number right off the top of my head. Um, we could certainly have it for the next.
180,000.
Yeah, probably.
Well, I think we can find that.
So. So for, so for today, for the, for the, for the work session, you know, how does the board want to move forward? Cause we're gonna have a public hearing next week. And, and, and that's based upon the advertised budget. And then the week after that is when we have to adopt the budget. So I, I guess, I guess what does the board want to see? I mean, is, is there consensus that certain things want to be pulled out? And we start just kinda going down, going down the list from there.
That's what I'd like to see.
Ms. Booker?
Um, I, I like the list that, I like the list that she put, uh, to pull the funds, I think it ended up 600 and some thousand dollars. And put that in fund balance as a, as a cushion.
Just leave it in fund, leave that.
Leave it, leave it, leave it in the fund balance. Um, the only one that I was a little concerned about was the, um, ambulance. Is that a crucial thing that we would have to keep? Or what was it, 190,000? Is that crucial that we need to keep that in there?
My only thought about that one, my only thought about that 190,000 for an ambulance is we're still going to start to have two crews.
That was the point I was about to make. We're about to get a second crew.
Right.
And if you, if you'll say what goes out for service, then you're stuck.
So, but if we.
No, well, they, they would, they, they could, they.
We have three ambulances.
We only run one.
Right now, we only run one, but if, when we add the second crew.
You still have three ambulances.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think we should do anything to put our citizens in jeopardy. And harm's way. And if the ambulance is in there and it's needed, I think it needs to stay. And that's my personal feelings.
Well, then let's take the else out. Take out the playground.
I don't see it in this list. It's not in.
Well.
I'm looking at close current pending CIP projects and return to fund balance.
And the, and, and the playground, the playground is done with money that we can't use for anything else.
Right.
It's proper money. It's proper money. It's not gonna, it's not gonna change anything in our budget.
Right. And we're gonna look for grants as well. Yeah.
Yep.
Well, and the one thing I was gonna look at is, it, it just, there are two things I'd like to see in there. I talked about the 1% to make it even where we talked about for the county employees, which is 66,000. I understand that. And then I'd like to see, what would it look like if we, instead of going 392 for the schools, we went 200,000?
If, if the board wants me to plug in numbers, I can plug in numbers. And I guess you'd have to ask Mr. Winkler what that does for his budget.
Can, 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 can the budget be done in such a way that if the state doesn't pass the payroll increase, we don't do that?
Yeah, I mean, cause, cause if you remember, if they're gonna adopt a budget, say in, in April, we, like I said, the, our budget is not into, in, in effect until July 1st.
I'm also sitting here going, if they, if they say, okay, they're not gonna give a caller or whatever. That was, we've already put our money aside. We already have ours baked in at 92 or 94.5 right now. But if we made it 92.5, it would still be baked in there. Then we'd be talking about another penny. That's when we could.
How do you get to 92.5 and still bake in all those things? I'm confused. And what, what?
Would be close.
So what do you want, what do you, what?
Well, I mean, we put in, we, we, we added extra money if we took away the 269.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's do this.
And then we put 50,000, I think, in each side of one of the, cause we were, we had found a 100,000 dollars last week when you made the suggestion.
You said, you said, you said, take out.
The debt funding.
Okay, so I took out the debt funding for 269.
Okay.
And then what'd you use to balance it? You could take that out.
We, we, we put 50,000, I think, in both CRMs.
Just to balance it to get.
Just to, just to use that 100,000 dollars, cause she said, put it at 94.5. And we had to find places to put it.
Right, that's fair. That's fair. Right, so now.
And then we had 392 in for the schools. If we went to 200 instead of 392.
You said go to, go to 200?
Go to 200. We'd be pretty darned close to, to 92.5.
Well, that means, so we have 569 available.
And.
At 94.5.
94.5. Ma'am?
Yes. Did you say, um, 200,000 to the schools?
Yes, ma'am. I know it's not fully funding.
Mr. Winkler is hopefully on, so Mr. Wink, Mr. Winkler, are you on still?
I am, I am. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
It, it will depend on what happens coming out of, and I know a lot of your, your, uh, discussions will depend on what's coming out from the State Department. Our original request, uh, and I'm estimating and, and, and doing a little bit of rounding was at 690. That was based on the governor's budget of about 1.1 million dollars of new money, most of which would have been considered basic aid. When we finally got the general assembly's budget, it came up about 300,000 dollars. We were able to adjust it. Within that 300,000 dollars is the 2% wedge for us, um, at about 275. That nowhere near touches a 2% um, increase for us. When you're talking about all the things that are changing within the VRS. Um, it really totals somewhere close to about 890. If you're asking for me if all the stars aligned and you, and, and we were able to receive 200,000 dollars of, of new money from the locality. I'm gonna say, yes, we could do it if the state's budget does not get hit as well. And I am cautiously optimistic that they're going to be looking at K-12 and trying to hold us harmless. But obviously we'll know more as well as everyone will with just in about three short weeks. It, it would be difficult to do, um, to take that kind of cut. Cause keep in mind, our original request was right around, right around 700,000. I think it was about 690 or 680. Um, but then we got 300 more thousand dollars once the House and the Senate came through with it. If we went back to the original governor's budget at 1.1, from the basic aid standpoint, that 200,000 dollars. I, I, I couldn't, I, I, I absolutely couldn't do raises with it. Um, I could do some type of raise, but it wouldn't be the 2%. Um, the way that we're looking at it right now. Obviously, we're grateful. We realize these are uncharted waters and, and untested times. And I wish I could predict the future. Um, I can completely understand what you're struggling with right now. I'm trying to do the best that I can, as well as the board, I was trying to do the best that we can to hope, you know, that we can support actually adding to the fund balance. And, and, and I'm actually talking for me right now, and I haven't had, I've had some preliminary discussions with board, individual board members, but not with the board as a whole. Um, so I'm cautiously saying what I'm saying right now. My goal i- is to, is to obviously end solidly in the black. And then if things aren't funded via the CIP and certain things that we are in need of, we can have some discussion if we, if we can use some of that money to roll over. Cause I'm, I'm worried about next year, just like you are. I get it. Um, I'm rambling a little bit. If, if, if nothing happens with the state budget or a minimal impact to what we're getting from the state. If it was only a reduction of basically 190,000 dollars, yes, I could make that work. It will depend on what happens after that, um, after late April from the state.
Yeah, I guess that's my thought process is now we have some wiggle room. If we have to do an adapt, an adoption, or if we have to come up with money from fund balance or something of that nature. I don't want to do it, but.
No, but, but, but here's the thing, we don't know what our revenues are really gonna look like. So if you go with an aggressive budget like this, and then our revenues are cut, you're gonna rip into the fund balance. You know, that's what's gonna happen. Cause we don't know. We don't know what our revenues are gonna be. So I think it's a mistake to try to cut it so narrowly. I mean, I, I don't disagree that you could maybe find a penny, get it down to the 93.5 instead of 94.5, but I think it's, or, I mean, not, we were, what does that put us at right now, at 569?
Uh, probably puts us close to.
We're about 50,000 dollars or 40,000 dollars away from 92.5.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I, I would leave at least 100 at 90,000 in to be used for whatever we decide at some point, whether it's for the schools, additional money for the schools, and then use the budget, uh, use the fund balance for CIP if we go down that route. Or we don't use it because our revenues didn't come in the way we thought they were gonna come in, you know? I just think you need some cushion in this budget. Cause I'm not confident the revenues are gonna be there.
I just know that people are sitting at home and they don't have revenues.
And then, and then, I totally get that. I totally, I totally get that. I totally.
And that's, those are the ones that I'm thinking about.
Yeah, no, I totally get that. And, but we still have to operate the county. And we, we have a, a fund balance that's almost depleted now.
How much additional money does all that put back into our fund balance? If we don't do those, those.
Those things that we showed before.
630.
Well, it was 658, but, but if you want to exclude the ambulance, you know, that could be more, but it was 658.
That, there's another slide in there about the building and in that presentation that we were on. We didn't really finish that, but.
Well.
No, no.
No.
Well, why wouldn't that be some wiggle room there either? That's what I'm sitting here thinking.
I mean, if you do.
All right.
For example, take just personal property tax. If we take a 10% hit on personal property.
That's 2 cents.
That's 700,000 dollars right there. Okay, there goes your 650,000. And that's just personal property tax.
So here's the thing I can tell you. So we looked back and then some of the numbers are kind of hard to look at. But back in, back in recession in, what was it, 2009, the collection rates went down about 10%.
Yes, normally we had, our collection rates were very steady. Back in 2009, when everything tanked, our collection rate for real estate was, well, real estate and personal property combined was 83%.
But then it would bounce back up later.
Yeah, that's the only time we've seen it that way.
Yes.
Well, in the last 10 years, 11, 12.
But I'm just saying, we'll eventually get it.
Well, it'll eventually come.
Yes.
But it.
Doesn't help you out for the.
That was a different situation though. Everybody's mortgages tanked. That, I mean, that was a little bit different than this.
30% foreclosure.
Yeah, that was a little bit different than this. Now, not to say this isn't horrible, because it is, but it, it's just a little bit of a different animal. So I'm not so sure. No one knows.
That's right.
No one knows.
Even the governor. Nobody does. Yeah, I think, well, I think that was one of the things that she, uh, we were talking about a little while ago, um, Mr. McGyver was talking about that people were adopting the same budget they had last year. And then if they have to make a, uh, amendments to it, and we're not adopting the same budget, but we can be at the same tax rate.
Charlottesville announced today that their plan is to adopt the same budget. And I'm not really sure how you do that, but they said they were gonna adopt the same budget and then look at amending it later. Now, when they say the same budget, I don't know if they mean the same tax rate or the exact same, but I'm not really sure what.
Well, the problem is, it's probably.
Just to, I mean, I don't know. It was your needs change.
On the call today, they said they were doing the same tax rate. You need expenditures per department. That's the same.
So the same tax rate and, and expenditure.
And expenditure.
So basically same budget.
Yeah, but I don't know. I'm not sure how you do that. Keep the same tax rate if, if all your other revenues, like sales tax, meals tax are not coming in.
Well, that's just it. That isn't gonna work either.
I mean, I mean, obviously.
Fund balance, they can afford that, right?
Maybe, and maybe, maybe their, their reassessments on some things, you know, are, obviously they're gonna be higher itself. Yeah, they went up high. So, but, but from the county, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna hopefully have our reassessments be better than they were.
Well, and, and keep in mind, we've still gotta look at what's gonna happen with the JRWA. We don't know whether those expenses happen this year or next year.
I, I.
Next year, you know, it's hard to say, so.
Boy, that's, that's hard to say.
They should be 21.
That's why I might, I mean, I hate to be a broken record about fund balance, but it is, we've gotta be really careful with it. Cause we'll, we'll, we'll have our hands totally tied.
The only emergency we have and we've never used it is that 12%, which is right now at approximately 9 million dollars. And I certainly have never advocated that we use that, but I'm just saying, that's the only backup money. And that's, that's what it's there for, disaster, basically.
And right. And so I'm, I'm, if we ended up having to do that, I, I would get that. And I wouldn't argue against it. That we are using it because it is an emergency, but I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm.
Because that has built from 7 million up to 9 million. Yeah, the budget has gone up. So that has gone up each year.
The reserve is based upon, it's based on the overall budget and revenues. So, so the, the reserve goes up as the budget goes up. We have a higher reserve.
Cause it was 7 million on the first name. Because it was seven million when it first came out.
Yeah, yeah, probably was. Yeah.
But it was seven million.
Yeah. So, yeah, so it, it does go up. So, I mean, so from a fund balance option, you know, the board can say, well, we don't want to fund any CIP this year in using fund balance, which currently in the proposed budget, you took all that out. You could say, well, we don't want to provide any, we don't want to do the burn building. We don't want to pay for the burn building, you know, to fund balance. And obviously, there's the JRWA to come down the road, but that's, the JRWA, that's, that's not gonna be in twenty-one. That's gonna be at twenty-two at that worst-case scenario.
Sure, and I'm just saying...
That's gonna start that case scenario.
Right, right. It's not that you're gonna use it, it's that when you do use it, is that number...
Yeah, I know. Yeah, that's a good point.
I know.
We can't put enough money there. So, so right now, with what we put in there, subtracting out the, the funding the schools at two hundred, taking out the debt service for all the vehicles, and then the two capital reserves, that has us at a surplus of five sixty-nine.
That's at ninety-four.
At ninety-four five.
Ninety-two five. See what we'd be in the hole.
You're fifty, fifty-one thousand in the hole at this point.
At ninety-two five.
At ninety-two five.
So this may not be a very popular idea, as far as being the HR manager, but one of the things that y'all could consider potentially is cutting down the county raises, if you're doing a half-year raise or even setting it up as a bonus come December or January, once we get on the other side of this. That's just an option as well, if you're, if you're lucky, especially while we're uncertain at the moment. And you can make amendments later in, in some other adjustments. That's just something that's been kind of the past.
Yeah, half-year raise.
You've already added two percent raise, right? And then you added another percent? I thought we already, I thought you put two percent in, and then you added another percent.
Yes, in, in my budget, I had a two percent increase, and the board for the advertised tax rate put in another one percent. If you took out the one percent and left my two percent in, you would, well, you would balance.
Balance was fifty-two point five. Balance is pretty easy with, at fifty thousand, at fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Okay, let's do that.
We can find, we can find fifty thousand from somewhere else, or I find fifty thousand in the fund balance, or somewhere else we have money.
What was the, the increase last year? Three percent?
It was three percent.
It was three percent.
The reason I brought it up is, last year, the schools had, had money left over, and they made it a four percent raise for the school employees, I believe, in about the month of April.
That was nice of them.
I said, thank you.
So why don't, so it sounds to me that we're going ninety-two point five, right?
That's where I'd like, that's where I'd like to be, that's just...
So, so what's the holdup? As you already said, is I have fifty thousand? Take it out of fund balance, just, let's just say ninety, keep it there, ninety-two five. I don't know if we can go any lower or not, maybe.
That's one where you said if you go lower, then you start affecting everything, that money that we take in.
So, yeah, because there's so many, too many unknowns, and I think we've vetted every possibility. That's the only one to me is, to, to my thinking is, the list that she gave, and I'm not sure whether we ought to take out the ambulance, but put that back in fund balance, and that's, and, and the rest of it, the two sixty-nine for the borrowing and something else to say. And, and if we can come out with ninety-two five, I would feel good about it.
Well, what about vehicles? Do we have to buy all the vehicles?
Takes all the vehicles.
No, but, but, but there, what the boards were talking about, Mrs. Eager, is, is basically not funding any CIP.
Okay.
Basically, holding off on CIP, and then I guess, you know, two, three, four, six, nine months down the road, depending on how things look. You could always, you could always, you know, kind of relook at, at what the CIP looks like mid-year if you want.
We'd have a better idea of what we collect.
The, the two things we almost have to, are gonna have to look at are gonna be some school buses and some sheriff's vehicles.
Right.
We'll, we'll, we'll keep our vehicles to the very minimum of what we need. I showed you that this year.
I know, you, you do a good job on that.
Yes, sir.
Anything that we don't need, and we're frugal with what we put in, and we don't dress them up for break, we're using the work.
You quit doing that, haven't you?
A question, does that, does that ninety-two five also include the schools' two hundred thousand? Are we keeping them at the, at the three ninety-two? Is that a two hundred, does that's...
That's the two hundred thousand, Ms. Booker.
It includes the two, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
If you did a half-year pay raise, you know, again, or even if you just did, based it on what does the state do? So that money then becomes cushioned if the state does nothing, right? That's certainly an option.
But those, but those is, yeah, but those are some things that we can do, Dan. We don't have to decide that now, do we? I mean, we have things in the back of our minds saying, once we have more information, we know where we are, then we can talk about other things. Right now, to me, it's just too many unknowns and...
I agree with you on that.
Well, you, you, you could, you could, I mean, right now, depending on how you want to figure out the fifty-one thousand, if it's, you know, the other things, the only two things you added last week that, that I think we haven't really, you got the one percent to add to the staff, staff pay, and then you got the sheriff's office pay adjustment.
Right.
Those were around sixty. What else did we add? We added the register for relocation. I don't necessarily know, that's, we're not, we're not gonna have to. Yeah, that's gonna be a have-to.
It's done, yeah.
Otherwise, there's, there's really, really the, the two things from what you added last time that have not been addressed, that you could balance it with are the sheriff's office pay or the one percent pay.
And here's one thing I'll ask you. Between now and next week, if we left it at ninety-two five, if y'all could go back and look and see if we got any change in numbers anywhere to make those fifty thousand disappear? That would be my, that would be my, to balance that out.
My question is gonna be to you guys. I mean, I, you know, I think we're being too skinny here, and you guys are the experts. You guys look at these numbers. I mean, we vote on it, but I'm pretty certain we're not gonna get the revenues we think we're gonna get. And we are not calculating that into this budget right now. That's a mistake.
Mr. Chairman, if you got just a minute. Hey, Mr. Chairman, speaking from the commission's office, tried to be pretty quiet since I'm a man of few words. One of the, there's a couple of things I would like to point out. A little levity might go a long way here. One thing's for sure, the personal property and real estate values that we have presented to the finance department, those are real numbers, so they're not guesses. Those, those are gonna be, you know, billable revenues now. Again, the collection is another issue, and we may or may not get it all in twenty-one. But I'd point out that our, our, our collection rate generally, over a few years, comes in at, you know, ninety-nine percent after it's all said and done. I think there's only, and I won't belabor that, but those are not guesses on personal property and, of the nine different categories of real estate. So the one thing that I, I would like to point out that maybe over the next week, possibly staff could, you know, be included, look at, this is an unprecedented year, we know that. We've effectively all but shut down for ninety days, you know, full quarter of the fiscal year, even at schools. I think y'all are gonna be presented with some year-end balances that you haven't seen before because of fuel savings, if nothing else. All of us have, have shut down any travel because that's just the nature of this beast. I suspect that the year-end revenues that you're gonna potentially look at are gonna be larger, you know, funds that are available at year-end that have not been executed, because we have had to go to amended schedules and, and schools effectively closed for the last, you know, ninety days of the year. Maybe that's a number they could potentially pull together for y'all by next week to see what we might be looking at as far as any unobligated year-end funds that we, you know, we can look at if we don't change it in the fourth schedule. I think it's gonna be pretty big.
And, but, yeah, Mel, I, I was thinking the, the same thing about the schools. But the schools also may need that money to educate these kids, because our children are not coming to school, but we still have a responsibility. So I was always thinking that what they saved in the budget would probably be turned into instruction somewhere the other, given lessons for children, and we, I don't know exactly, you know, what they have in mind. I don't know if they're gonna be giving that back to us. And I think, too, we kind of lose sight of, of how well our people pay their taxes.
Well, I think, I think the taxes will be collected. I really do.
Yeah.
Excuse me, but, but I was gonna add, Ms. Booker, I think it goes beyond schools. I think that, for, for example, we, we know we're effectively no travel or holding place until June ten. Well, it's only a few weeks until the end of the fiscal year. I think every one of our departments, I, I think about, you know, my department, we generally would have some travel associated with career development. We're not gonna be able to do that. Parks and Rec, you know, near and dear to all our hearts, has had to shut down. There's a lot, there are potentially a number of, of expenses they're not gonna incur because they're not able to execute in their program. So I just, schools was, you know, schools is a, you know, a big player, but they're not, of course, the only one that's going to be saving money because we're not executing, because we're not, we're not doing our routine, normal routines. I think it's gonna be quite a bit of extra, you know, unexpended funds.
Okay, Ms. Booker.
Thank, yeah, thank you for looking at the upside, man. I don't, nothing is up in this situation, don't get me wrong. But you're right, Mel. I think that is going to be something that we're gonna be pretty surprised about.
Yes, ma'am. I think it'll be considerably more than normal, because we aren't executing at our normal, you know, a, a normal schedule. We are all basically on a much reduced schedule, if not shut down, which should certainly generate a full quarter of some revenue that's gonna be unexpended, at least something like that.
The only thing about that, though, is, I mean, as we always said, the biggest piece of the budgets are the personnel, and we're not getting rid of personnel. You know, the travel, yes, we all have some travel and some training that we go to in our budgets, and, and say each department has two thousand dollars for the year. Well, two thousand times however many budgets is, and that's for the full year, that's not gonna necessarily balance our budget.
I hear you, but you aren't trying to close a fifty thousand dollar gap, you know, fifty thousand.
No, no, you're, no, you're right.
The one thing with the Parks and Rec is, they aren't doing things, but they also aren't taking in, taking in the revenue that they would be taking in. So that, that'll probably balance itself out, but that's all right. Mr., Mr. Spencer's getting plenty of time to work on his fields.
No, I mean, from county...
I just think we're all in it together, and, you know, we all are in it together, and collectively, we, you know, there could be some anticipated return of funds that we're just not gonna be able to execute because of their amended schedules and so forth. But again, it's a small deficit y'all are trying to fill, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two thousand.
Thank you, sir. All righty, anybody else? Holy cow. Sounds, I'm not used to that. Um, so, I mean...
So, so do you want us to leave the fifty-one here and see what we come, come back with, what we can?
I, I think so.
I, I'd like to see an honest assessment of what you think, you know, I mean, you should provide some cases of what could happen to revenues.
So, so I, I, I'll, I'll show you two, because there is, there is a study that just came out today that someone is doing, but it, it's kind of hard to apply to us, and, and it's just kind of this economic study that they've been looking at all these localities that are getting, you know, that are affected by a deals tax, transient occupancy taxes, stuff like that. So, haven't had a chance to really look at it.
No, 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 it's, it is there. I mean, it is good, but I mean, you know, sales tax, personal property collections, you know, those kinds of things. What happens? What, what are we doing that happens at that point in time? I mean, let's, we should say, here's the worst-case scenario, here's the best-case scenario, you know, and here's a middle-case scenario. What does that really look like for us?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess what we, what we could do, we could go back and say, let's just say that we see collection rates that we saw drop ten percent as they did back in two thousand nine. Well, we could show you what that looks like and how that's, how that's affected.
And that will, that will affect us upfront, but eventually, if we get back to work, that ten percent will...
It may, I mean, it, it could possibly...
It will be paid.
It could possibly just affect us for, you know, this, this June fifth billing cycle, and maybe when people are back to work, they, they get all caught up by the end of the, the next, this year. I, I don't know. But, but no, we, we could do that.
Do you agree an envelope for this?
We could come back with some different scenarios as far as, you know, worst-case, best-case. What do we think, what do we think revenue is really gonna do, you know?
That would be a good idea.
We could do that.
Right, are there any other questions about the budget, then?
What are we gonna do?
This is, I think what, 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 what we're talking about is, right now, as it stands right now, we're showing a budget of ninety-two five. We're showing basically a deficit of fifty-one thousand, and from that, what we did is, we reduced the schools' funding so they get two hundred thousand. They took out all the, we took out all that debt wedge, and we, and we took out the, the fifty-some thousand to each county and school CRO.
How much would it take out, to take out the five, and it was ninety-two?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mrs. Booker, what was that?
If it, if it were ninety-two rather than ninety-two five, how much, how much would more of the fifty-some thousand would it be?
Thank you.
A hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So just...
A hundred and what?
Well, yeah, it's, I mean, yeah, it's a hundred, what'd you say, Miranda? Oh, you're out.
A hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
I have to say, it's a hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Okay.
It was a three and one.
Thank you. All right.
So, so if we went down to ninety-two cents, we would be short two hundred and six thousand now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
We'll leave it where it is, right? Ninety-two point five. Unless we get something that says not to do it.
Yeah.
So we can get some pizza here before it gets cold.
Yeah, we can, we'll, we'll leave it here. We'll go back to the drawing board. We'll look at all revenues. We'll look at all the numbers to see if there's gonna be any changes. We'll come back with some worst-case scenarios as far as what revenues might do, and...
And Eric, Eric, excuse me, and I would like for you to pull up the chart that you usually pull up with the value of homes and the different taxes, so we can look at how much more taxes people would have to pay if it, at certain values. And I think you started... I think you started seventy-five thousand up to two hundred fifty-something. You have the charts available. I always like to look at those.
Yeah, it's, Ms. Booker, it's up on the screen right now, if you see it.
I see it. I just put my, I was just talking to you, looking out of the window. Yeah, I see. Thank you. Okay.
So, so, so right here, if you have, if someone has a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, on average, if you were at ninety-three cents, their, their annual tax rate goes up eight dollars a year.
Okay, yeah. Yeah.
Nobody's gonna thank us for not having enough money in the world, that's for sure. They're not gonna thank us for that, not for the eight dollars or twenty-three dollars they save.
Eight dollars. Yeah, if you, right now, we're at ninety-two five, if you have a hun- if you have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house and, and the board says, let's go to ninety-three, you'd be at eight dollars a year increase.
Sixteen dollars for the median house.
Yeah. Yeah, two, two hundred thousand is, is roughly around, uh, it's a little more than two hundred thousand, but the, the median price in, in, in Flavanna, so, you know, probably twelve, thirteen bucks or something like that. Seven eleven, yeah. So, okay, so, so we will certainly do that. We'll, we'll go back to the drawing board, get more information for next week. And unless the board has any other further questions on that piece, we can, uh, we can, we can finish the unfinished business. Um, and like I said, we, we, we will have a public hearing next week, um, at seven PM. And after the public hearing, if the board wants, we can, we can look at this a little bit more because we'll have some hopefully more information for the board next week at this time.
Or should we do that before?
Of that.
Should we do that before?
Well, you could hear the public's comments first prior to, and then we could work on this and, and we're going to have to figure out what we need to do to get public comment on this, if we're doing, if it's close to the public and we're doing it remotely.
Before, don't let me dismiss, before we do the second round of public comment with, Ms. Booker can talk about her email.
So does the, does the board want me to do anything else with this or can I close this out?
Close it out, okay.
All right. Save it, let me close it out.
Now, new business, do we have new business? I have none on my sheet.
Well, there, there was, oh, that public comment, I guess, you know.
Yeah.
I think there's just in, in general, there have been new thoughts with regard to how we are communicating and outreach to our citizens.
Well, Ms. Ms. Booker, what we did with the first, uh, email that we got was we just basically gave a general overview of what the email says, ma'am. And then we'll put, we'll add that in it. If you'll forward that to Mr. Dahl, I think you already said that you did, then we'll add that to the minutes.
Okay, and the other thing is, I'm hoping it went to Mr. Winkler because it's Miss, the school email.
That's the one I think that we got to everybody that, that they've been sending about the public meetings and the.
Right now, this one is about childcare.
Yes, ma'am. It's about having the meeting on the internet and doing the childcare.
Yeah, reopening facilities, provide childcare, using the Flavanna After School Program. I sent it to all the board members and to Mr. Dahl. I don't know if I sent to Mr. Winkler or not, but I will.
I've received that one about fifteen times.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. Mr. O'Brien, you were saying something about, about communicating with the public or?
I, I mean, it's, it's just whether we, you know, just a comment more than anything else, not a specific item of new business, but, you know, I think, uh, as we pointed out by Mrs. Booker, there are a lot of nonprofits and, and community groups that are putting out ideas there. And I think it's just, it uses to make sure that we're responsive to some of the, the requests that they might make, you know, and we're not, you know, we don't have a lot of room to do that right now, but if this drags on a lot longer, what, what are we, you know, what's the county going to look like? I mean, I think there's some modeling that could happen as well, too.
And I, I spoke about going around to check on neighbors, but is there anything that we can do that they could contact here that we could possibly get them in touch with someone? If they're in a crisis situation?
Yeah, we got groceries and they're eighty years old and they can't get their dress. Please don't. But I mean.
I'm not eighty years old.
I know you're not. You're sixty-two.
Yeah, no, I mean, wh- wh- can we always do a better job? We can always do a better job of communicating. I mean, obviously, the easiest way to do this is, is through social means, but there's a lot of individuals that, that don't communicate that way. But if those individuals that are maybe from a church or a nonprofit organization or a community group, you know, gets the information to us, whether it's, you know, an email to me, whether it's an email to, you know, my two cents or, or anything like that, or, or just giving us a call, you know, although the county is, is, is on kind of a modified schedule right now and we have a lot of folks teleworking, we are still working, everyone's phones, you know, when they're sitting in their office, it's like they're sitting, if they're sitting in their living room, it's like they're sitting right in their office and if it goes to their extension, it ranges right at home. So, so we're trying to, we're still trying to do the county services as, as we've always done, although it's a little.
Yeah, if we, if this group meets again, Eric, I, I, I will send the link to you and maybe Kelly or someone will get online.
Do we need to make that recommendation now for the treasurer?
Um, I don't think this will.
You know, she's aware of the problem.
That can be a head nod thing. I don't think we have, you know, she, she's aware of the problem, right?
Yeah, I, I think if the board had maybe some idea or direction as to what they envisioned, if it's a date of some sort, we, we could work into it that way. But I mean, Fred's office is going to work through the, the dynamics of, of what it takes. It's just, what's that date? And if the board has a recommendation, we can certainly give the recommendation to the treasurer.
I would say the thirtieth, just because I think that's what dates them, just having it by the end of the year. But I mean, as long as we get the money in, we get the money in.
That's, we just said normally June thirtieth, just.
We could revisit it.
To, to have individuals, to encourage them to pay their taxes prior to the end of the fiscal year, just so it, it'll help the county and it'll help the budget, but if that's not what the board wants, then, then, then that's out.
And we're basically still keeping June fifth as the day. We're just asking that they don't charge any penalty and interest if it's later on. I mean, we could do the tenth or whatever.
No, I, 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 again, I'm just looking at it and saying if we're, if we're all sheltered in place through October, what does that look like?
No, I don't, I don't.
So.
My wife would be a shot, man.
Oh, they said the divorce rate spiked in China.
That and the birth. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just a little feedback on the, the, uh, tax, you know, first half due date. If it's going to be anything other than five June, then we have to have that date before we give the, uh, personal property and real estate books to the treasurer for the bills to be done. Uh, and, you know, we thought about this at length, you know, in the office today, talking with some of the treasurer staff. You got kind of the whole gamut. Wouldn't be unreasonable potentially to put a date that the first and second half collection would basically both be the same thing, December seventh, because December fifth was on a Saturday. But I, I'll tell you, the thing I think about, Ms. Booker made a point earlier about Flavanna citizens pay their taxes. If we defer it from June fifth, uh, and it's anything but the fifth and bills don't go out, I think we will have probably more calls from people looking for their bills, um, that didn't get it because people pay their taxes in Flavanna. And what I, I really think, you stick with the June fifth date and with the board's support and encouragement, the treasurer can waive the penalty and interest, because there are two components, penalty and interest. And she could waive that until a date certain later on, but collecting on it.
I'm glad you're a man of few words.
Kind of be.
Me too. I know, buddy.
Yeah.
Ms. Eager?
I said I agree with Mel. I think it should be the fifth with, uh, grace period for the penalties and interest.
Yeah.
It would be nice to leave, leave the date consistent, but, but provide some relief to those that can't make it by the fifth and whether it's June thirtieth or July fifth or whatever, whatever date it is, but.
I think that could be determined at a later date with the, you know, input of the treasurer. It may be depending on where our nation is, but that could be waived for potentially up to ninety days. Uh, people that live out and will pay their taxes. You're going to end up with.
We still have a tax due date to June fifth, but you are basically implementing a grace period.
Uh, uh, exactly. And I think there will be less, uh, concern from, uh, uh, I would say vast majority of our citizens that are expected, expecting to pay it and receive a bill, you know, that they pay by June fifth. So just to refresh your mind, the treasurer has to get the bills out, not later than fourteen days prior to work, you know, prior to the, uh, actual date. So April fifteenth, if y'all set a tax rate, that's, that's, should be sufficient for that to happen with no problem. And just, again, with the board's support and encouragement, they asked the treasurer's office to waive penalty and interest for specific grace period that y'all feel is appropriate. And that can be revisited a second time, but leave June fir-, uh, June fifth as their first half collection. And then that keeps us in the fiscal cycle we're used to. County has the money to continue to operate.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'm out.
All right. Do we have anything else that anyone wants to add?
Um, I have a question. Uh, has anybody talked to, uh, Joyce Pace? Is she on board or, you know, for voting? And this puts a big.
I don't think by. You know, I have not talked to Joyce Pace. I know there was some, uh, it's, it's a little bit in, in, in the influx right now. They're trying to encourage absentee voting right at this moment. Um, but I don't, honestly, Mrs. Eager, no, I, I haven't talked to Joyce in a, in, in a little bit. And we actually kind of have a, kind of a, a staff meeting, you know, that we do kind of remotely to kind of just get updates. And so, so folks can ask questions and we can ask questions. So I'll, I'll make sure to, to get an update from this, uh, Ms. Pace tomorrow.
Now, the reason I bring this up is we're supposed to be, stay at home until the tenth of June and the primary is June ninth.
I saw the governor was on today and he talked about mail-in absentee ballot. I don't remember him saying anything about going to the polls. So I don't know.
He said they were currently in the, he said they were currently in the process of trying to figure out what to do because a lot of places have elections.
Right.
And.
In May, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of localities. And he said at this point he had made no decision.
Okay. Because I know you talked about absentee. Right, so.
Well, I, I'm sure they're, they're going to encourage absentee voting, no matter if it's May, June, or whatever it is at this point, but, um,
Right.
we'll, we'll find out more as time goes on. Just like everything, we're, we're kind of, we're, 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 we're being flexible on a weekly basis. All right.
Yeah, sure, sure. Y'all were talking about the food earlier. I wanted to, uh, have y'all seen the feeding for Flavanna poster that's going around? Uh, it's a, a part of, uh, DSS, uh, Mac, uh, Flavanna County Public Schools, Blue Ridge Area Food Bank. Area churches are all collaborating and we're going around pretty busy with our stores and stuff for them, helping them out. For those that have, don't have internet, it gives the locations and all that stuff and we put it on Facebook. So a lot of people in the community are helping.
All righty, well, if nobody else has anything else to add, I'm going to ask, we have a motion to adjourn.
Wow.
I'm sorry. Well, the second round of public comments, I think we covered with that, but Mr. Weaver has something he wants to add.
Yeah, I, I'm on the jail board and I wanted to bring you up to date. Eric knows all about it. It says, Mr. Weaver, the total amount deposited in a VIP account was nine million dollars total. Uh, the interest rate started at one point seven two and as of yesterday, it was one point one five, averaging, uh, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars per day. Unfortunately, because of the world events rates are dropping. What I basically wanted to say was they budgeted twenty thousand dollars for the jail board. And the last report I had, which was a month or so ago, we've already collected eighty thousand dollars and it looks like it's going to come more than that. We have, have put it in state funds and we've changed the bank, so on, so forth. So that, that helps the county. Yeah, I said.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a motion to adjourn by Mr. O'Brien? Do we have a second by Mr. Weaver? Ms. Eager, do you want to adjourn?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, we are now adjourned. Thank you all very much.
All right. Evening.
Hey, you didn't say.